Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, November 3rd, special election night coverage meeting for the Sioux Falls City Council. Thanks for being here. To those of you joining us remote, welcome as well. We'll go ahead and get started, Tom, this evening, by reading our roll, please.
Council members Erickson.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Kylie.
Here.
Knightzert.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Recky.
Here.
Okay, at this time, joining us remotely on the line is Erica Varco. Erica has given our invocation before. She is a chaplain, local pulpit supply pastor, and a seminary student, and she's going to provide that invocation tonight. So I'd ask that you rise for that invocation, and then when she's done, we'll stand for the, stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. We are home all in quarantine, and let me tell you, I kind of forgot how lovely it is to all be under one roof for so long. But anyways, in all seriousness, I just want to thank you guys for all of your work. It is hard, and it's long, and it's difficult, and I just want to really reiterate that those of us just living, being a part of Sioux Falls, we notice your hard work. And no matter how you stand on different issues, we know that you care about us, and for that, we are thankful. And I pray that you can just meet everyone with grace and love during these hard times. So with that, in true Erica fashion, I'm gonna open with a joke. Since it is election night, it's going to be a little political. I hope that's okay. So what happened when Ben Franklin told a joke to the Liberty Bell?
Cracked it.
It cracked it up. Okay, I hope you guys are laughing, right? Okay, so let us pray. Gracious and loving God, you are our Comforter and our Hope. Hear our prayers as we come before you. Strengthen us in this time of need. Inspire us to act out of solidarity and generosity, and give us hope of a brighter future. Lord, there are so many people who are struggling during this time. From those on the front lines fighting COVID, to those struggling to help people, to leaderships struggling to make right decisions. Let us pray for workers afraid they won't have jobs, and parents and grandparents who are struggling to homeschool. We pray for teachers who are teaching online, for pastors who are preaching online, for people who can't get out of bed in the morning because they just do not know how to cope. God, we lift all of these things up to you. Give us all this strength to get through these hard days. We pray for your love and compassion as we walk through this challenging season, through these hard days. We ask for wisdom for those who bear the load of making decisions with widespread consequences. We pray for those who are suffering with sickness, and all who are caring for them. We pray for misinformation to be curbed, that fear may take no hold in hearts and minds. May we also approach each day in faith and peace, trusting in the truth of your goodness towards us. So tonight, God, we lift up our leaders. Give them the strength to carry on as they make decisions, some of which are not popular. These are difficult times in which to lead. Give them the guidance to do so. In your name we pray. Amen. To all of you, God's blessings, thank you for your work.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Erica.
Thank you. Have a nice evening, everyone.
All right, we'll move on to item four, our consent agenda. Look for any changes or motions to that.
Move approval. Knightzert.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion approved by Knightzert, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Any other changes? All right, we'll take a vote on that, then, please.
Council members Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. We'll move on to our next item, item 19, which is our regular agenda. Look for a motion on that one, please.
Move approval. Knightzert.
Second, Jensen.
Motion by Knightzert, seconded by Jensen to approve this item. Any discussion on that, counsel? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote on that one, please.
Council members Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. We're on to public input portion of tonight's agenda. As a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than three minutes per person, and in total, lasts no more than 30 minutes. During general public input, the public is welcome to speak on any topic that does not appear later on the agenda. So again, for those of you who may be new to a council meeting, if you're here to talk about masks or anything along those lines, we'll talk about those when that agenda item comes up. This time is just for general comments on items not related to anything on the agenda. For regular agenda items, following general public input, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. I also want to point out that in our council procedures document, the chair does reserve the right to limit the number of speakers during any agenda item following an hour of testimony. So I know we have a lot of people here to speak on some things tonight. After an hour of testimony on any one item tonight, what I'll do is announce that it's been an hour, and then I will ask for people to come forward who have new arguments, things that we haven't heard in that first hour, all right? So I'm assuming there's quite a few people who want to talk about the mask topic. That will likely go over an hour, so when we get to that hour point, we'll call for new arguments on that. That also has the ability to be overridden by a majority vote of the city council if they would, if they feel we want to continue on at that point. So just a couple housekeeping items there in public input. So at this time, general public input, anyone can come forward for that, and Tom, note, our time is 7:08. Good evening.
Good evening. Bruce Danielson. I was listening to the press conference, and it struck me odd that, did you turn this on so the people at home can actually see it this week? Last time I was here, you didn't do it. So our mayor made a statement. I'm one mayor of 80 frickin' square miles trying to control the behavior in an entire tri-state area. Quite honestly, I'm done. That is about as frickin' unbelievable a thing I have ever heard a, somebody pretending to be a leader could ever say. That role that's sitting on the podium right now is about all it's worth and what you would clean up with it. There's one remedy, if any of you are brave enough to finally frickin' do something, I'm asking you to resign and resign now. We have, one of the studies that's incredible in our system is finding out what real leadership is. And you don't give up the boat until it's going underwater. I can't believe that our mayor decided that, that it was worthy of putting it out there for the public to even understand. We know that leadership is hard, but frankly, you don't go out and cry about it. Ed Muskie in 1968 was under stress. He cried about it, and he never became president. So there's a, words that are often said, his dude and the dudettes here, do us all a favor and frickin' resign, and frickin' resign now. And I also want you to consider taking your $117,000 with you, and let's have some real government here again. Thank you.
All right, anyone else this evening for general public input? Good evening.
Greetings. I'm David Zalkitis, and I have some ideas that you might like for improving some council, city council processes. I think if we want to, we can improve meeting access, maybe promote some transparency, and get a little more democracy going here, just because that's a good thing to do. So to improve meeting access, we could send push notifications of agendas and meeting times to interested parties. And that way, when the meeting time changes, people would know about it, and they wouldn't have to wonder, wouldn't have to go and check a website somewhere. I think that would be just a great way to get things going. The Ethics Board could use some work with their transparency. I'd like to see them move meetings here so that they can be recorded and allow for this fancy overhead projector, things like that. Now, there's some question as to whether or not it's sensible to abstain at city council meetings when you vote. Well, I think sometimes you just need a little more time to think about it. In that case, abstaining makes some sense, and you could allow for that if you wanted to change the ordinance. And there is some sample text there if you want to see that. All right, and then there's been a few problems now and again with decorum at city council meetings, and I bring it up now and again. A couple of weeks ago, we had some problems with a counselor being interrupted by a different council member. That's just not okay. And that's on the mayor to enforce decorum because that's what it says in the ordinance. All right, now, when public speakers screw up, we get to hear about it, and that's good, but we should also hear about it when other people make mistakes, so that we can have more decorum and more respectful meetings. Now, something that's a little different, if we want to balance the administration's power with city council power, you might have some full-time city council members. So that's a long-term project that might really make for some profound changes in city governance. And my favorite part of the Tuesday evening is the after-meeting mingle, because it promotes camaraderie. We get to hear a little bit about what's going on inside people's heads. I think it makes for a more comfortable discussion. And I think if we were all a little more like this guy, life would be better all around. So, oh, good evening, everybody.
All right, thanks. Anyone else here tonight for general public input? Good evening.
Hi, Steven Siano. I'm a disabled veteran as of '78, and I've had people in the medical community covering it up. I've had various experiences with the medical community, and they're not to be trusted. They're, it's a medical industry, and they often lie to us. I've got my own experience. Now, mind you, I did read on like 12th grade level in elementary school. I won awards and skipped ahead, and tested out of high school early, qualified for everything the Navy had to offer, was top in my class, got First Choice Duty Station, chose a reconnaissance squadron where I won the chess tournament, proved myself. They attacked me. I became disabled as a result. They've been covering it up ever since, the medical community. I wound up with PTSD, compounding Asperger's, and I struggled through the years with medical people, psychological psychiatric people covering it up. I've got unbelievable anxiety, and it's, it has been incapacitating, and now I've got physical, and it's still being covered up locally in 2004. I remind you, I brought proof to try to appeal the denial of my claim with the VA, and then somebody, you know, they refused me an appeal hearing when I showed up with the evidence from my naval record. And somebody, incidentally, conspiratorially, in another entity in southeastern behavioral, declared me delusional. And this has been hanging over me ever since. Fact is, I have been disabled, and the medical community continues to cover it up. I got a friend recently, I accompanied, she wound up being scared into an unnec, possibly unnecessary breast surgery, and then after that was supposedly successful, they're trying to sell her on a double mastectomy, totally unnecessary and potentially dangerous. And I told the oncologist multiple reasons against it. She agreed with everything I said, because it was valid medically. I know what I'm talking about, and that was that. So when I say something, I think that you should give me some credibility. Don't think I'm delusional, just imagining it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here for general public input tonight? All right, seen none. We'll move on to our next item, please.
Next items, item 21, new 2020-21 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for Crown Casino Number 3, 4805 West 12th Street, Suite 3, with conditional use permit being approved on October 7, 2020, pending permit issuance and final inspections per building services. Item 22, request to add video lottery terminals with the new 2020-21 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for Crown Casino Number 3, 4805 West 12th Street, Suite 3, pending permit issuance and final inspections per building services. Item 23, new 2020-21 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for Deuces Casino 5.5, 3613 North Cliff Avenue, Suite A, with conditional use permit 12306-2020 being approved on July 1, 2020, pending final inspections per building services. Item 24, request to add video lottery terminals with the new 2020-21 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for Deuces Casino 5.5, 3613 North Cliff Avenue, Suite A, pending final inspections per building services. Item 25, amend transfer of 2020 retail liquor license, including video lottery terminals from Commonwealth Gaming and Holdings Deuces Casino 2A, 1912 West 41st Street, Suite A, to Commonwealth Gaming and Holdings Deuces Casino 10.5, 453 West 69th Street, Suite 1, by correcting the address to 457 West 69th Street, pending final inspection per building services. Item 26, new 2020-21 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for Silver Dollar Casino, 900 South Marion Road, Suite 100, with conditional use permit 118830-2020, being approved on May 7, 2020, pending final inspections per health and building services. Item 27, request to add video lottery terminals with the new 2020-21 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for Silver Dollar Casino, 900 South Marion Road, Suite 100, pending final inspections for health and building services. Item 28, new 2020-21 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for Active Generations, 2300 West 46th Street. Item 29, transfer 2020 retail liquor license, including video lottery terminals from Sand Trapp Incorporated, The Poorhouse, 5213 West 12th Street, to On My Tab Incorporated, The Attic West, 5213 West 12th Street, CUP not required, pending final inspections per health. Item 30, transfer 2020-21 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license and 2020 retail wine license from Top Shelf Entertainment LLC, Wine and Canvas, 5239 West 26th Street, to Top Shelf Entertainment LLC, Wine and Canvas, 1412 West 41st Street, with conditional use permit 01280-2020 being approved on October 7, 2020, pending final inspections per health. And item 31, special one-day wine license for Wine Time on Main LLC to be operated at Washington Square, 8th floor common area, 300 South Main Avenue for, for an event on November 10, 2020.
Stacy, you want to speak to any of these here tonight?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any questions. Pretty routine matters. Jamie Palmer's not here tonight, but if anybody has any questions, I'll take them.
All right, thanks. Anyone from the public here to speak on any of these items tonight? All right, counsel, you got any questions on any of these items tonight?
Move approval.
Second, Recky.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by Recky to approve these items. Any discussion, counselors? All right, hearing none. We'll take a vote, please.
Council members Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes. Recky.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 32, please.
Item 32, second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 601 West 86th Street and 7805 South Dakota Hawk Place, from the C2 Neighborhood Commercial District to the LW Live Work District, number 12853-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval 5 to 0. Private applicant KT Holdings LLC.
Jason, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Jason Bieber representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application and the owner is KT Holdings LLC. It's located west of South Minnesota Avenue and south of West 85th Street, just west of the Walmart. It's roughly 3.04 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing a four-story mixed-use building with roughly 22,000 square feet of office space on the main level, and then 108 apartments on levels two through four.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? All right, counselors, do you have any questions for Jason on this item?
Move approval. Knightzert.
Second, Sale.
All right, motion by Counselor Knightzert, seconded by Sale to approve this one. Discussion, counselors? All right, hearing none. I'll call for a vote, please.
Council members Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes. Recky. Yes.
That passes eight to zero. We'll move on to item 33.
Item 33, second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located south of, South Lancaster Drive and east of South Brook Drive, from the RD2 Residential Suburban Townhome District to the RE1 Apartment Residential Low Density District, number 12879-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the, of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval 4 to 0. Private applicant Empire Homes LLC, Brady Hyde.
The applicant and owner here is Brady Hyde with Empire Homes. It's located south of West Lancaster Drive and, and west of South Ellis Road. It's about 7.5 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing some apartments on the seven and a half acres.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? You have questions, counsel, for Mr. Bieber on this? All right, look for a motion.
Move approval. Sale.
Second, Recky.
All right, motion by Sale and seconded by Recky to approve this item. Any other discussion, counselors? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Council members Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 34, second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located south of East 57th Street and east of South 6 Mile Road, from the AJ Agriculture District, the R. Single Family Residential Rural, number 12885-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval 4 to 0. Private applicant Signature Companies, Clint Ackerman.
The applicant and owner here is Clint Ackerman. It's located south of East 57th Street and east of six, South 6 Mile Road, just west of the Big Sioux River. It's about 3.42 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing one single-family house, and then a future single-family residential development will be out there.
All right, thanks. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this one tonight? Counselors, you got any questions for Jason on this item? All right, look for a motion, please.
Move approval. Sale.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen to approve item 34. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Council members Erickson. Erickson. Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero.
Erickson votes yes.
We'll give it to you. Eight, zero. That item passes. Next item.
Item 35, second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 1201 East Lake Drive, from the C2 Neighborhood Commercial District to the I-1 Light Industrial District, number 12894-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval 4 to 0. Private applicant Granite Valley Holdings, LOB Dustin, Dustin Risti.
The applicant here is Dustin Risti. The owner is Granite Valley Holdings LLC. This is located north of I-90 and just east of North Cliff Avenue. It's about 1.32 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking to construct a contractor shop and warehouse on that lot.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one? All right, counsel, you have questions for Jason on this item?
Move approval. Sale.
Second, Jensen.
Motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen to approve item 35. Discussion, counsel. All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Council members Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 36.
Item 36, second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 1300 and 1304 East Lake Drive, from the C2 Neighborhood Commercial District, to the I-1 Light Industrial District, number 12909-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval 4 to 0. Private applicant Reynolds Construction Management, Paul Reynolds.
The applicant here is Paul Reynolds. The owner is, once again, Granite Valley Holdings LLC. This one is just located just northeast of the previous request. It's about 1.72 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking at constructing two warehouse buildings on these two lots.
Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this one? All right, counsel, you got any questions for Jason here? Look for a motion, please.
Move approval. Sale.
Second, Recky.
Motion by Sale, seconded by Recky to approve this item. Discussion, counselors? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Council members Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
That one passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item 37, second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 505 West 81st Street, from the CN Conservation LW Live Work, RA2 Residential Apartments Moderate Density District, to the LW Live Work District, number 12914-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval 4 to 0. Private applicant Eric Willitsen.
The applicant here is Eric Willitsen. The owner is 81st Street Partners LLC. This one is located just north of the existing Subaru dealership, and then just southwest of Landscape Garden Centers off of Minnesota Avenue. It's about 0.71 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is to get that entire parcel as live work, and then future plans include some additional storage of vehicles for the Subaru dealership, and then some office uses along 81st Street.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item here? All right, counselors, you got any questions on this item? Look for a motion.
Move approval. Sale.
Second, Recky.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by Recky to approve. Any discussion, counselors? All right, let's vote, please.
Council members Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item 38, please.
Item 38, second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 3303 South Lisa Drive, from the AJ Agriculture, the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District, number 12915-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval 4 to 0. Sponsors the mayor.
The owners of this property is Clayton and Jenna, Jenna Hugador. And it's located just northwest of the intersection of 41st Street and Veterans Parkway. It's about 0.37 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is just to get the correct zoning with the current use of a property. It's currently a single-family home.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this one? Counselors, do you have any questions on this item? All right, look for a motion, please.
Move approval. Nitzer.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Nitzer, seconded by Jensen to approve this one. Any discussion, councilors? All right, let's take a vote.
Council members Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Breckie.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item thirty-nine.
Item thirty-nine, first reading and emergency ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, to require face covering in an indoor public place where six-foot social distancing cannot be achieved. Recommendation set at date of second reading for Tuesday, November tenth, twenty twenty. Sponsors are council members Sale and Kylie.
Counselor Sale, you going to have the floor on this or Counselor Kylie?
I'll, I will lead since Counselor Kylie is not here. I'm not going to read all the whereas's because some of the numbers are certainly outdated from what we've seen in the last week before this was put together, but this is a basic mask mandate. If I can put it to a nutshell, if you're in a place you're not supposed to be smoking, you should be wearing a mask. That's it in a nutshell. There's some exceptions along with it. If you're under five, if you're sitting down and you're actually eating, if you're receiving medical or dental care or if you have a medical condition, mental health condition or disability and you've got a little note from your doctor. Some people have talked about this. It seems to be a hot topic recently. I think we've all received some minting, but I believe it goes right along with the One Sioux Falls framework, which health and safety is one cornerstone of that. Some people have said that, geez, we can't enforce that. Well, you know, they do in Omaha, Fargo, Rochester, and I'm here to tell you our police department is as good or better than those police departments. And I've talked to the chief of police about this. We've had long discussions. Now, if you're driving down Minnesota Avenue and you're going thirty-three and a thirty, they're probably not going to give you a ticket. They do have discretion, but if you're going fifty-five, you're probably going to stop and get a ticket. So they'll use some of their discretion. I trust them to do that. The reason that Counselor Kylie and I came together on this specific wording was to protect the Sioux Falls population, relieve some of the stress that's on our healthcare systems right now, and to promote commerce. It doesn't say you can't go anywhere. It says just go there and wear a mask. So I encourage people in Sioux Falls to wear a mask when you're out Christmas shopping, when you're out getting your car fixed. Wear a mask, engage in commerce in our city. Otherwise, we might, might be heading to a crisis. Now, if I'm wrong and people are inconvenienced by wearing a mask, that's the worst possible thing that can happen. If we don't wear masks and the numbers continue to climb like we've seen very recently, we will be facing a healthcare crisis where more people will die. So that's it. That's all I've got for my presentation. I know Counselor Kylie is a lot more eloquent than I am, so I hope he can add more to it.
Counselor Kylie, you have anything else to add before we move to public input?
I'll be more eloquent following public input.
I'm sure, I'm sure you will. All right, we'll move on to public input. So anyone who wants to speak on this item can, can come forward. Yep, go ahead, sir. We'll just take you as you come. So go ahead. This young man will be first and you can come right after him. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. I'm coming to you as a-
Can I ask, can I ask everyone who speaks just state your name if you could for the record?
Yeah, my name is Joshua White. I am a member of the Midwest diaspora. I was born in South Dakota, born in Brookings, but spent my adult life bouncing between coasts, most recently Seattle, where things like the mask mandate were enforced stringently. So I came here, moved my family here in May specifically, amongst other reasons, for the leadership shown by Governor Noem and the general ethos of freedom in South Dakota. So I'd like to make an argument that's a bit more high-level than I think some of the other citizens will make on the general legality of something like a mask mandate. Under our constitution and under our legal codes and tradition, there's no authority to do two things that have been done consistently throughout this country in the COVID-nineteen situation. First, there's no authority to declare states of emergency simply on the say-so of those making the declaration. We've been told that this is a pandemic and it is not. When the civil authorities assume emergency powers, which I do not object to at all, in my opinion, there'd better be asteroids falling from the sky, dams breaking or aliens invading. We need something big, not a sickness in which point one percent of people over sixty-five die. That is not an emergency. Secondly, when a genuine crisis is a disease, the appropriate and constitutional and legal response is to quarantine the infected. It is a gross violation of our civil rights, recognized by our constitution, to simply assume universal infection and to make everybody wear a mask. Our response, my response to the council, and I hope the city of Sioux Falls' response to the council, is to demand that we be shown in the law where made-up emergencies can be declared, where healthy people must be masked, and at what metric these mandates will be lifted. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Josh. Come on up, young man. Anytime, brother.
Um, a lot of this stuff happens without really reviewing-
Go on, state your name there, sir. Go on, state your name and then you can go.
I'm Phil Mast.
All right.
I'm from Corson, but I'm a Minnehaha County resident and a veteran. I go to the VA. Thanks for taking care of my VA, giving me parking space, et cetera. It's a great part of my life. Okay. Um, numbers, guys. Uh, I got three questions. I want you to raise your hands if you got the answer. Do you know the number of national cases we have and the national population and what that percentage is? Let's try that. You raise your hand if you know or if you can do it. That's the per capita rate national of the COVID. No answers, nobody knows. It's two point eight percent. Let's go to the state of South Dakota. We got a population of eight hundred and eighty-five thousand. We have forty-six thousand cases, five point two nine percent. That's one in every nineteen people you meet every day. Let's go to Minnehaha County. Twelve thousand nine hundred and eighty-five cases, population one hundred and ninety-three thousand, six point seven three percent. If we don't take care of that, it's dereliction of duty. It's your job to take care of this. This is a responsibility, just like keeping the law, keeping the health. Dereliction of duty. All right?
All right, thanks, Phil.
Stephen Ciano, we have a pandemic, global pandemic. Indeed, we have, but it's not what it's claimed to be. We have a pandemic of lies, fear-mongering misinformation about a virus which doesn't kill most of the people. I came here before and I talked about all the people that were put on respirators, most of which were dying, maybe it's because they were not put in a proper position, in a prone position. So I'll let you know back then, months ago, that I did know something about, about the issue. There are better treatments and masks have not been shown to help at all. And those in public health, those running hospitals and insisting everyone mask up in order to utilize medical services, they need to change their tune. I'm denied medical care now because I refuse to wear a mask. Now, I could get a doctor's note for a couple of reasons. My anxiety, my asthma. You see me struggling to breathe here, not due to any virus. And that's an ongoing problem I have. I have allergy and, and exercise-induced asthma and I believe other breathing difficulties. It seems that doctors should be held accountable for misinformation, for failing to do what, what they are supposed to do and help the public. I just heard that the head of, I think it's the head of, one of the hospitals here is really promoting the mask, saying like it's our duty, like if we're going to be responsible. Actually, if we're going to be responsible, we're going to look up what is really going on, what we should do and not trust people who replace science with politics and claim it to be science. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Come on up, sir. I'm gonna let, yeah, you come on up and then gentleman with the great beard, you can be next.
Hi, yes, I am Colin Crable. I am a citizen resident here of Sioux Falls. Like many people before I have stated, I have another thing I'd like to add is that do these mask mandates actually work? And by all the data that we have been given, they actually haven't. I mean, you just take Kentucky here. They had a statewide mask mandate put in in July, put in, in July ninth, and cases continued to rise. They extended it August seventh, again in September tenth, and again October sixth. That mandate, that mask mandate in Kentucky did not rise. We can see that in other cities. We can take-
Colin, I think, Colin, I think you can lay it on that thing and we can maybe, we can turn that on, I believe. And it's large, so you might have to shift it around a little bit to get the, but I want the people at home to be able to see that too. So if you just lay it on the screen there, we can-
Okay. Yeah, so we have Wisconsin here. They have the statewide stay-at-home order. They end the order, but here in August first, they put in a mask mandate as well.
Jim will help you right here. Ignore his Steelers mask. He's, he's a good guy.
Okay. So statewide mask mandate on August first, and then it continues to rise after that mask mandate. Take West Virginia. They had cases, cases rise as they put in a mask mandate here on July sixteenth, and the cases continue to rise. And while, well, we can debate the efficacy of masks or the, the, uh, the disinformation brought about COVID. I want to direct these mask mandates straight up and say that they do not work. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Colin. Come on up, sir.
Michael Stangland. I have been a citizen of Sioux Falls for over a decade. First, if I might say, I can remember months ago when this council was discussing a proposed lockdown and watching on TV as an overwhelming number of citizens came forward to say, no, don't close down our city. And I, I must say that watching that, I've really never felt more pride to be a citizen of Sioux Falls than watching that. And I'm feeling encouraged about feeling similar things with what I have seen, what I have heard thus far. Now, originally, I wasn't supposed to be here tonight. I had initially volunteered to help with election, but unfortunately, that didn't work out because I am one of those people who just does not go with the mask situation and they would not allow me an exception for the health and religious reasons that I usually provide. I normally, I mean, in contrast to the people who may not like to go places, who require, who don't require masks, I usually seek out places that are far more lax on it. And when I have to go those places, you know, it, it usually works out. But anyway, because I, because it didn't work out for that, I'm here instead to, you know, express why, express my feelings that this council should reject any effort to mandate, you know, mask compliance. The problem is that they are not a real solution. They are really just a quick and easy fix that let people pat themselves on the back while claiming they're doing something. But the evidence doesn't support the masks having a real impact. I have seen so many rules over these months across the country that make no sense. And if anything, the real evidence is there that says the masks do more harm than good. I've seen reports of people getting sick in spite of masks. I've read up about how the masks create an environment where people are more likely to get sick. I've seen dentists report on mask mouth from people who are constantly wearing them. I mean, I realize that this proposal doesn't, I mean, doesn't go as far as this, but I mean, there has been at least one state that has tried to say, hey, if you're in a Zoom conversation alone at home, you got to be wearing a mask. I mean, I'm limited by time, so I really can't give more examples or go more in-depth, but ultimately, my point is this. Mask mandates, including this one, don't actually help, aren't actually based on facts. They're about blind acceptance to conventional wisdom to do something.
Thank you, Michael.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Matt Condon, and a lot of the points I wanted to make have already been made. So one point that I haven't heard yet is a legal consequence to the imposition of this mask mandate. It's that misdemeanors will end up on people's records, good people's records, and it could affect their job hunt, like especially if they're in their late teens and they suddenly get a misdemeanor on their record. And studies have been done where they used, I think they're called N ninety-five respirator masks, supposedly the best ones. And even with those studies, they found that there's no statistically significant decrease in the rate of spread. That's what the masks are supposed to do, right, to prevent the rate of spread, right, to keep it down? They were using high-tech masks and they found no statistically significant decrease in the rate of spread. Another problem is that people can develop hypoxia, hypo, hypo, leaving oxygen, leaving, you know, that means oxygen's not getting into your blood. Also excessive carbon dioxide going in through your mouth. And so that's just a couple of the examples of the health maladies that can happen when you impose these things on people. So other than that, other people on my side of the argument have already mentioned a lot of the things I wanted to say. So thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you so much for everything, you guys. You're doing a great job. My name is Alan Olson. I work at the Pentagon and I work with Sioux Falls School System. We are required to wear masks everywhere we go. That is one of the requirements. I'm used to it. I don't like it all the time, but I wear it when I have to. And I don't have to wear it if I don't want to, but it's up to me. But I just want to let you know you guys doing a great job. Whatever you guys decide, we are, because we are at the Pentagon, we had to wear a mask. That's requirements. I don't know what they do at the Pemerson, if they do that too. I'm not sure. But I know you guys doing a great job and I really appreciate it for everything you guys do. And the Sioux Falls School System too. They really appreciate for everything you guys do. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Alan.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Anne Lenars. I am here because your health condition exemption is a problem. I see that you're trying to accommodate for it, but I actually went to the doctor, the city of Sioux Falls offers, and asked for an exemption because they give me severe PTSD-style anxiety attacks. I tried wearing the face masks when I was volunteering at the banquet and it literally put me on the floor, hyperventilating. I cannot wear them. Sorry, I tried. But I called the doctor and asked them for an exemption for my job and they told me, they refused because the CDC website said there is nothing that should be able to, no health condition that should be able to prevent you from wearing a face mask. So how am I supposed to get that written exemption if they won't give it to me? Furthermore, if you do mandate masks and that becomes an issue- if you do mandate masks and that becomes an issue, you could put someone like me out of a job. And I know that there are a lot of people that I have talked to who are scared to express that they have this similar issue, because we are told, it's just inconveniencing you, go ahead. There's a difference between inconvenience and debilitating, and that was the issue for me. So if you mandate it, you're putting me in a position where you might override my client's ability to hand a note to my employer and say that she's exempting me, because you as the city will require it. So please consider that mandates have implications. Additionally, I would like to read as much as I can to you of, just to give you enough information to suggest that there is not enough agreement the masks actually work, and I can give direct sources, if anybody wants them, to everything I'm about to say. The World Health Organization admitted to the BBC that its June 2020 mask policy update was due not to new evidence, but political lobbying. We had been told by various sources that the committee reviewing the evidence had not backed masks, but they recommended them due to political lobbying. The point was put to them, and they did not deny it. An analysis by the US CDC found that 85% of people infected with the new coronavirus reported wearing a mask always or often. Compared to the control group of uninfected people always wearing a mask, did not reduce the risk of infection. A May 2020 meta-study on pandemic influenza published by the US CDC found that face masks had no effect, neither as a personal protective equipment nor as a source control. A July 2020 review by the Oxford Center of Evidence-Based Medicine found that there is no evidence for the effectiveness of cloth masks against virus infection or transmission. A COVID-19 cross-country study by the University of East Anglia found that a mask requirement was of no benefit and could even increase the risk of infection. An April 2020 review by two US professors in respiratory infectious disease from the University of Illinois concluded that face masks have no effect in everyday life, and the list goes on. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Good evening.
Hello. My name's Alicia Reiners. I'm a small business owner of gymnastics school, fitting since I'm barely above this podium. So what I wanted to speak on was a couple of issues, one being that I am a small business owner. I took precaution when all of this hit. We shut our business down for the time being. We slowly opened it back up with the help of the city. We used that service that came in and looked at our protocols to see if everything was good and ready to go, and not only did we receive, like, they were very impressed with what we put in place, but they used our protocols and took them to other businesses that were similar to us to help them, guide them on how to help combat this within our small business. I think that should be my ability to do that as a business owner, is to take that responsibility on myself and reach out to our customers and have our customers do what we suggest, which by the way, was not wearing masks within our facility. We do a lot of cleaning, we do a lot of hand washing, and we do a lot of, please, if you're sick, do not come, and we've had a lot of great, we've had zero issues within our facility with that. The other issue that it comes down to is especially in youth sports. From my side of things, we have even more of a safety issue mandating kids being in masks during sports activity than without, especially in my sport, because they are doing big, flippy, scary things in the air, and if they have a mask on and it comes and flips up over their head, much more likely to get catastrophically injured doing a sport like that than, than not having their mask on and being closer to their teammates. So, and also from a spotting aspect, I have limited vision when I have a kid coming at me with a mask on. Now granted, we wear our masks when we are spotting kids. If we are static and the kid is right here and we're spotting them, we've required that of our coaches to do that, because we do feel like that's the right thing to do as a business. But again, it was our choice to make. And I think if you push the business owners of South Dakota to put into place nice or different types of things that they feel is appropriate for their business, that's the way we combat this versus just mandating across the board that masks are required. Thank you.
Thanks, Alicia. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Cooper Caraway. I'm the president of the South Dakota Federation of Labor. We represent over 80 labor unions and trade organizations across the state of South Dakota and over 20,000 workers and union members. I want to thank my dear union brother, Councilman Kurt Sale, for bringing this forward. I want to bring up something that hasn't, hasn't been touched on. Our ability to collect data hasn't caught up to allow us to really investigate the impact that some of these things are having on our, on our city. We can, we can collect data that measures deaths. We can collect data that measures cases. We know how many beds we have, but we cannot measure the impact. You know, a lot of the folks who have died were working-class folks, union members. I knew them, I knew their families. They worked very hard. Some of them worked 50 years and, and just to retire, to start collecting their pension just to catch COVID and then die. Many of these folks, you cannot measure the impact they have on the city, what one of these deaths has, because what looks like on paper, one death, that one, one number on the piece of paper, that number one right there, that was a mentor to several different children. That was a neighbor who helped someone with their car, with their roof. That one person maybe was, was a business owner or helped someone with their business. That one number was an active churchgoer who provided immeasurable, immeasurable value to our community. And with each one, our city gets less and less and less and less great. Now, if this mask mandate, if it inconveniences folks and saves one life, it's worth it. It's worth it, because that one life, it's one number on a piece of paper, but it is of immeasurable value. I've seen it. I have hugged the mothers and the wives and the children. It is easily enforceable. I agree with my brother Kurt that the police here are just as good as the ones in Omaha, and they do a good job making sure everybody's got pants on, so they surely can do a pretty good job making sure they got masks on. It's really no different. I know this is tough for you guys, and I've been, I've been sympathetic and attempted to make sure my organizations are communicative through this whole thing with you all, and I'm sympathetic to the position you're in. When you ran for office, you did not intend to inherit or, or to come into a global pandemic. You had no, no way of knowing that. And you sure as hell did not think that you wouldn't have the support you were counting on from the state and federal governments, but this is the position you're in. I know you're doing the best you can, but you need to do just a little bit more, and we're with you. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Cooper. Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening. Jeff Griffin, president and CEO of the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce and resident of Sioux Falls. So the Chamber of Commerce supports wearing masks and all the CDC protocols, and we joined with more than 40 organizations last week to encourage South Dakotans to mask up. The Masked Up South Dakota Campaign is led by our state's medical community. It represents more than 40 other organizations, including chambers of commerce, trade, and professional associations, along with school administrators. Masked Up's coalition seeks to educate and work together and ask South Dakotans to do what they can to make a difference in our communities. And we think these measures are helping our businesses stay open, which is obviously a priority for us, especially as we enter the fourth quarter, important quarter for retail. Regarding, regarding the ordinance for discussion tonight, I know there's been a, an urgency and a question of where the chamber is on this, and to, to be clear, it, in my view, it was premature for us to have a position yet until the ordinance was read and we see the scope of it and hear you guys deliberate, and it will be in our, our intent, our board has already been in discussions with it, and I'm certain those discussions will continue throughout this week, and, you know, look for the, the chamber to have a position on this, on this ordinance. I have some very specific questions, because tonight, we're talking about a mask mandate, a government mandate that comes with penalties for violating the ordinance. So the chamber is sincerely seeking information about this ordinance with our questions about the mask mandate and how it'll impact our business. So I'll direct the questions to Councilmember Sale and Kylie as sponsors, and I'd like to note, I think, you know, when these, when these topics get emotional and the public weighs in, we enjoy and respect our relationship with city council, and both Councilor Sale and Kylie have returned our call. Councilor Sale reached out to me several weeks ago, so there's no debate on everybody's intent is, is in the right, the right direction. But specifically, are the penalties for non-compliance? The previous COVID-related ordinances passed by city council on March 12, 17, and 26 had in common a section that stated the penalty consequence for violating the ordinance. The three previous ordinances stated general penalty misdemeanor up to $500 or up to 30 days in jail or both. The proposed ordinance omits penalties for violating the mask mandate. Is there a penalty for non-compliance with the mask mandate? An explanation, please. How will the mask mandate be enforced and prosecuted? Can individuals report violations to the city? Will businesses be required to report an individual who is not masked in their place of business? Are there consequences to our businesses for failure to report? The mask mandate ordinance does not have an end date. How will the council rescind the mandate? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening.
Tim Stanga. Just amazing when we start talking about mandates. Speed limits. Whenever I go down the interstate at 65 miles an hour, I got people passing me at 70, 75. We have a mandate on texting and driving. Do people still text and drive? Yeah, they still text and drive. What have, what, what'd that mandate do for you? We have seat belts. How many people have been killed in the last month not wearing seat belts thrown from cars? How many? Just amazes me that we're going to come after people that don't want to wear, wear masks, and we do live healthy. That's what we should be promoting, is health. How do we get people healthy? But yet, there was a, there was a analyst from Sanford, wasn't telling anybody that the machine wasn't working properly. For three days, they were giving out false positives. I want to know if the false positives were taken out of the total of what the city was talking about. Another thing, when I grew up, my mom and dad, they told me how to, they taught me how I can wipe my own nose, if I skin my knee, how to take care of my knee. They taught me this responsibility of being an adult. Now what we want to do is we want to shut down more businesses, because I'll guarantee one thing, I have to wear a mask in a business, they will not get my business. I will go online, I will go someplace else. I'll go to a different community, matter of fact, because you can do that. You guys want to sit there and wipe my nose. I don't need you to wipe my nose. You gotta stop putting fear in peoples. You gotta stop putting fear in people. That's all you guys are doing. And I just think that we would come out and think about it a little bit different. Think about how people can live their lives. I go work out every day. We put our head up against the monitor, takes our, takes our temperature and everything. Nobody wears masks. If you want to wear a mask, you can wear a mask. Nobody's been thrown out of that facility yet, because why? People do it responsibly. You don't have to wear a mask to be responsible. But I just don't believe that we want to look at mandates when we have mandates that don't even work right now to begin with.
All right, thank you.
And if anybody wants toilet paper later on, I'll give you a roll.
Come on up, sir.
All get ordinances on that, instead of the guy from the Chamber of Commerce?
Thank you.
We should all get one sitting right here so we can have them.
Bruce Danielson. A while back, we started getting this book, and I appreciate it from the clerk, because if I don't have a chance to print something out, I go get the book and see what the resolutions are, what the ordinances are, what the proposals are, the information that's necessary for the meeting. Tonight's meeting needs to be recessed because the, okay, tonight's meeting needs to be recessed because none of these ordinances are over on that table or in this book. Walworth County Auditor was, was, had a $5,000 bond after she went to jail for not supplying and complying with open meetings laws. Once again, we have an open meetings violation in action right now, and I'll be considering filing it with, with some others, and we're probably going to spend another time at the Open Meetings Commission, because unless you recess this meeting tonight and print this out so all of these people in this room have a copy of that and the other items that are coming up before us, we have an open meetings violation. Thank you.
All right, anyone else here to speak on this? Come on up, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Tyler Bonnage, and I just want to thank you for your work here this evening. I was born and raised in Sioux Falls, and I currently live here with my wife and three children. Concerning the proposed mask mandate, my philosophy about masks is that if they are efficacious when it comes to mitigating the spread of the virus, then by all means, let's wear them and get back to normal. When it comes to pandemics and other forms of crises, I believe that we as Americans shouldn't be afforded the luxury of avoiding inconveniences. I believe that making sacrifices and doing things we don't want to do for the sake of others should already be practiced on a personal level. I mean, for instance, I've been married for seven years. I know what it's like to do that. I don't like rodeos, but my wife does, so guess who was at the PBR rodeo two years ago? This guy. Therefore, to go from the micro level of personal relationships to the macro level of the general populace, inconvenience and sacrifice should be reflexive in our nature. However, I do take issue with mandating something that is ineffective for its intended purpose. I don't believe that masks are efficacious when it comes to mitigating the spread of COVID-19, and I'll present data indicating as such. I believe that truth is its own reward, which may challenge deeply held convictions that some shared this evening, but we must put aside our pride and humble ourselves so that we can do what is best for us as a community. From the outset of the pandemic, where masks are concerned, we were told very clearly about their efficacy. On March 8th, Dr. Fauci was interviewed on 60 Minutes with Dr. John Lapook, and document, and is documented saying that, and I quote, "There isn't a reason to wear a mask. Wearing a mask may make people feel better, and it might block a droplet, but it isn't providing the perfect protection that people think that it is, and the intended, there is unintended consequences for wearing so." On April 1st, the New England Journal of Medicine is quoted as saying, "We know that wearing a mask outside healthcare facilities offers little if any protection from infection." Later in the article, it says, "In many cases, the desire for widespread masking is a reflexive reaction to anxiety over the pandemic." They conclude their analysis by saying that it is also clear that masks serve symbolic roles. Masks are not only tools, they are also talismans that may help increase healthcare workers' perceived sense of safety." And it, and it goes on, "One might argue that fear and anxiety are better countered with data and education than with a marginally beneficial mask," end quote. And I believe, like Fauci and the New England Journal of Medicine is a partisan, and at least a viable resource to go to. So my question then is, when was the pivot in embracing masks as an effective mitigator of COVID-19, and what data is given to confirm it? I'm not an epidemiologist, but I have compiled data from epidemiologists who say that mask mandates don't achieve their desired purpose. These are epidemiologists from Oxford, Yale, Stanford, Carnegie Mellon, and the CDC. Due to time constraints, I can't fully lay out and summarize their conclusions, and as I see my time-
Thank you, sir.
Is there a chance I can just brief conclusion?
You know what? Got your points. They're very well made, so-
All right, sounds good.
Appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else tonight here to speak on this topic? Please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Steve Johnson. Lot of good information tonight. 94% of the deaths recorded have an average of 2.6 comorbidities. Most of those comorbidities, I would say, are lifestyle problems. We're selling booze, we're selling tobacco. Those things are killing people. We're speeding down the highway. Those things are killing people. This mask mandate, I think, is a little silly. First of all, can you tell me, are there any- First of all, can you tell me, are there any medical masks in this room at this time? You look at the mask when you go to the store, it says, "Not a medical device." Okay? Anybody know how big the virus is? 60 to 140 nanometers. That's 60 billionths of a meter. A millimeter is one one thousandth of a meter. If you want a mask that's going to protect you from that virus, you're going to need a mask that will not allow you to breathe. Now, I've got two items here. One is for seriously climbing up a mountain. One is for hanging your keys. These masks that people are wearing right now is like this carabiner for carrying keys. They are not going to save your life. And this gentleman says, "If we can save one life, the mask is a great idea." If we can save one life, one life, close down the bars. Close down those alcohol sales establishments. Stop selling tobacco. Stop selling the vaping. Last year at this time, that was the big discussion in schools, was the vaping and all these kids. That's gone away. My wife's uncle just died. He would have been 90 in December, smoked most of his life, had a heart attack. But on the death certificate, they jammed a stick up his nose, found COVID, so that's what he died from, at 89, having a heart attack. This mask is not going to solve this. The masks are being worn at schools. Our 0 to 19 age group have lots of cases, no deaths. My grandkids are getting sent home from school because somebody was in contact with somebody that had contact with somebody that had COVID. So I would say, don't go with this mask. And if you are, you better have a serious criteria for mask. Not this anything helps. That's the sign I see when I get off the interstate. Anything helps, throw me a dollar. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Anyone else here to speak on this topic tonight? Get one shot only, bud, sorry. Any other speakers here? Come on up, sir. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Richard Lemus. I had moved from California just to come over here to have a better lifestyle. With the discussion of masks, at no point did you talk to anybody touching this podium about cleaning their hands, proper sanitizing and washing after they left. So this is not the end all be all of everything. At any point someone touches this, they continue to spread. Touch your face, you touch your keys, you have an opportunity to spread that to your family and loved ones. So why are you still concerned about this? I have to wear this at work just to make sure that my employer is able to provide me with a job. If I'm not following this, then they could be shut down or fined. That's why I left from California. My wife is a massage therapist. There's a, if you're looking at your, your commerce, a place called a senior facility of Touchmark. Had a posting for massage therapists. You could come into our facility to attend to our seniors. Mentioned nothing within the ad for COVID, but also gave the massage therapist an opportunity to bring in outside clients. These people aren't seniors. What are they doing coming into this? In your prison systems, half of your prison inmates and, and correct their officers are coming down with COVID. Why are you not protecting them? But you want to restrict me and saying, if I don't wear this, I'm going to be fine being facing jailment to go into your prison systems or just into incarceration? What does that do to me as a possibility of getting future employment if I lose my job, if I don't follow this? I'm hoping that there could be some sense of reason. This is not it. When it comes to the science, the science says this is not what's really going to protect us. If you're going to have people truly protected, proper education, teaching them the health benefits like good hygiene, eating well. Your, your comment about proper areas dedicated for smokers to have an opportunity to take this off, they're at a higher risk than I am because they're affected their lungs by the contaminants that are coming into their bodies. Diabetics as well have a, have a greater chance of dying than I am. I have a chance of succeeding and overbeating this, just like our president did, and others have too. Those, there's even cases where people with over the hundreds have survived being infected with COVID. I would really say, think about this, this is not the end all be all. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. All right, last call for any other comments tonight on this. All right. We'll move into, let's get a motion on the floor and then we'll move into a discussion, if that's all right. Counselor Sale?
Move to approve.
Second, Brecky.
All right.
Second.
So I'm going to give that to Counselor Brecky. So it's a motion by Sale, second by Brecky, and that motion again is to set a data second reading for next Tuesday, the 10th. So, Discussion Councils, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to follow up on a few things that were brought up, some questions. Question was brought, what is the penalty? This falls under 10.9999, general penalty, and it states, the ordinance states, that if there is no specific penalty provided for, any person shall be, who shall be convicted of any such violation shall be fined not more than $500 or imprisoned in county jail not longer than 30 days, et cetera. My recommendation to the city attorney, if this passes, that he set the fine at $50. This is not a revenue generating thing for the city of Sioux Falls. I just want to make sure that it is followed. So that is the ordinance that goes along there. Another question was brought up about what is the matrix that I've used to bring this forward? And there is no magic formula that based on percentage of infections. I came to the decision that, I've been working on this for a long time, to come to the right conclusion. But when I consistently hear from our healthcare providers that they're starting to become overwhelmed, the same criteria we used in the spring was to make sure our hospitals were not overwhelmed. We heard yesterday that Avera was doubling up on their ICU rooms. We also saw today that there were 78 more people admitted to the hospitals. They are being stressed to their capacity, and that's what I've been hearing. The last question that was asked, and I will answer now, when does this go away? And we really struggled with that. Do we put a number in? Do we put a date in? So we left it, along with our other emergency things that were put in last spring, Executive Order 218. And that is a declaration of emergency to address the novel coronavirus. Said, "Given that time is the essence pursuant to Section 33.025 of the Code Ordinances of Sioux Falls," this is coming from the mayor, "I declare that there exists a threat to public health, safety, welfare, necessitating immediate measures to prevent the spread and potential effects of the novel coronavirus, COVID-19. Upon declaration of the emergency, the mayor shall have the powers as set forth in sections," and then there's a whole bunch of numbers. So the mayor has the ability to drop the emergency status in Sioux Falls. We are currently still in that emergency status, as is the state of South Dakota through January 1st, December 31st. So we left it this way, so it's up to the mayor's discretion. If he feels there's not a state of emergency, he can take away the emergency declaration and this would go away. Of course, the city council could always act on that also. But that's where it would go away. And I'll make those documents available to those people that asked. So I just wanted to clear up a few of those things. And I did enjoy the discussion that we heard today.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Selberg, you have a comment on the phone?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I'm going to keep it simple tonight. First, I want to say thank you to all the citizens who've reached out and shared their views out there. I am doing my best to respond to each of you, as I'm sure the other counselors are as well. It's been pretty well nonstop. And as has been the case since COVID began, there of course are no easy answers, and every time you hear a great argument from one point of view, you then turn around and hear an equally good argument from the other point of view about five minutes later. So, I mean, obviously, it's a subject worthy of all the time and consideration that we can give. And I think just for tonight, I'm just going to say that I will be voting to move it along to a second reading and monitoring the numbers and hearing from folks, and we'll go from there. But I will be moving it along to a second reading. Thank you.
Other comments from the council on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Kylie, go ahead.
Thank you very, very much. I will follow up the very eloquent Counselor曲的Sale. This is, very simply put, a public health measure. And it's one that we believe needs action on at this particular point in time, probably much prior to this. The intention is to, in addition to protecting the health of our citizens, we wish to relieve the pressure from our healthcare centers and our, and our healthcare providers. We have heard from dozens of them asking for even just simply a 5%, 10% reduction in, in cases that they're dealing with. Their caseload has doubled from what I've been told from the individuals that have contacted me. So, and, and these numbers continue to go up. I also desire to keep businesses open. As Counselor Sale stated, our economy is, is, is very important to keep that going. This puts all businesses on a, on a level playing field. And it's also important to keep our schools open. And I think it's been proven in our schools, the effectiveness of masks. The teachers that I have talked with were, are, are very surprised that they made it past the first month of school. They thought they'd be back to distance learning long before now. But the use of masks, they believe, is what kept them in session. Public health officials are now predicting the worst is still ahead. So this is something, I think it's a common sense measure that will, can simply help alleviate the spread of COVID-19. And I do hope that my fellow counselors will give it serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nitschard, go ahead.
I haven't really weighed in on the mask issue, I don't think, really publicly. So I'm going to go on a bit of a monologue, but I want to assure you that if it makes it to a second reading, I'll be pretty, pretty quiet. So I'll just kind of say my piece. You know, a pandemic is a, is a scary thing for many people. Some are affected by it deeply and some very little to almost none at all. And, and there's a randomness to it, which adds to the, the fear, I think. It's human nature to want to do something when we're afraid, we want to be in control, and we want to believe that we can do something. Feeling out of control makes us anxious and fearful, and that's just how we tick. I need to repeat something that I've said in the past. There is no cure and no vaccine. Nothing I or anyone up here does or mandates can stop this virus, and we need to be honest about that. You know what to do, social distancing, avoiding large gatherings, hand washing and wearing a mask if you need to, or you think, or if it makes you comfortable. As policymakers, we have to address this rationally. We know the vast majority of people will survive this virus and may not even be hospitalized. That in no way minimizes the suffering of those who are affected. It's just meant to put things into perspective. As with any virus and risk in life, we all have to make our own risk assessment, make the best decision we can in our own personal situation and what's best for our family. I don't know your life story. I don't know what you've been through, and I don't pretend to, and we should not try to do so for others. I'm very aware of the impact this virus is having on our healthcare workers. I wish there was something we could do that would appreciably make their lives easier, but I don't know that there is. I'm not a fatalist, but I'm a realist, and I know my, my and this body's limitations. There's a natural urge for elected officials to want to do something, anything to fix a problem, and many want us to do something. But we also have to realize and be honest when we can. With all that said, I want to discuss the issue of masks specifically. Thoughts on this subject are held by people almost as firmly as a religious conviction, it seems like. So I think it's going to be very hard for me to change your mind or vice versa, and that's okay. Whether you wear a mask or not, whether you support a mask mandate or not, I believe you care about people. I reject the notion that if you do not wear a mask in everyday life, that you don't care about others. Do masks work? I think it grossly oversimplifies it to say, yes, they do, or no, they don't. The truth is, the only peer-reviewed study I'm aware of of cloth masks in a healthcare setting showed they did not work. When someone asks me, do I think masks work? My answer is, it depends. What type of mask is it? How is it worn? Does it fit properly? Is it being cleaned or replaced after it is worn? Does the, where did the other person have symptoms? There's any number of variables. There simply is no peer-reviewed study I'm aware of that proves masks work to prevent the spread of COVID. And of course, the question again would be, what type of mask are we talking about? And so many other things. What we do know in most states is, that have mask mandates, and many countries have for many, many months. Many have had those for long, long periods, and even lockdowns. Despite those mandates, they have surged repeatedly after those mandates, and many, if not most, are surging right now, just as we are, even though they've mandated masks for months. We could play dueling studies all night long, and we probably won't change each other's minds, so I'm not going to belabor that. I'm being asked to force people to wear masks regardless of the situation and with no proof whatsoever that any individual person has COVID or poses a risk to anyone else. There are pros and cons to everything. I've heard some say that there's no downsides. That's not true. There's always downsides with anything in life. There's those that have health conditions. I know some who have been the victims of domestic or sexual violence, and wearing a mask is something that's very emotionally traumatic to them. There's any number of reasons why people struggle or cannot wear a mask, and just by looking at them, you can't possibly know. Masks can induce strips some of our individuality. The fact is, our faces is what identifies us and individualizes us. And we lose facial expressions and facial cues. Distance, we get distanced socially and emotionally when we wear masks. Now, of course, there are situations in which we need to wear masks, of course. I'm not anti-mask. Of course, in certain settings, if you have, if you're symptomatic, masks are very important. So I'm not anti-mask. I'm just pointing out that there are pros and cons to mask wearing. We're not talking about actively symptomatic people in healthcare settings. We're talking about the general population in every situation. The fact is, an extraordinary request, this is an extraordinary request and mandate, and it should require extraordinary evidence of its efficacy, and I just don't see where it is, and just looking at other jurisdictions. As it relates to this ordinance, compliance includes wearing any number of things like a neck gaiter, a scarf, or a bandana. I'm not aware of a shred of evidence that any of these do anything but make you feel like you're doing something. I'm not interested in mandating people to do something to make us feel good without any proof that it actually does good. We do give up certain civil liberties for the common good, but restrictions on liberty, liberties should always be narrowly tailored to accomplish the goal, and there should be evidence that it actually will accomplish the goal. Neither are satisfied in my mind. This is incredibly broad, and masks haven't magically slowed the spread in other jurisdictions. I believe our state and our city's strategy is the right one. Unlike other states, we have not imposed draconian mandates to our great credit. Despite those draconian actions, those other jurisdictions are experiencing spikes and they haven't solved the problem. I don't want to ruin what we have by going down the same road others have. Lockdowns and mask mandates have not worked. There isn't proof that I have seen that they do work. This will put businesses in the position of enforcing the unenforceable, which frankly, we don't even want to enforce it. I want to finish with this. I don't judge you or think less of you if you wear a mask, and I don't think less of you if you don't wear a mask. I believe you can make the best decision for you and your family, and I don't know your situation. If you think you need to wear a mask, go for it. If it makes you feel better, wear a mask. That's great. I honor that. If I go to a store and they require me to wear a mask, I figure, you know, when in Rome, and I wear a mask. It's not a big issue. But I think they should have that choice to make that decision. I think you can make that decision about what's right for you. This is just going to create division. And as was stated, I have no idea what the objective metric is to trigger this, and I have no idea when this is going to go away. I have no way to know if this virus is going away in, in two months, one year, 10 years. I, I have no objective way to know if we're going to be masking up for two years, three years, if it's just going to go on and on. This virus isn't going away. We have to do things that are sustainable, effective, and things that move the needle. For those reasons, I can't support such an overly broad restriction with what is in my mind, there's no evidence that will accomplish the goal. And while we give items a second reading usually as a courtesy, I think this is so big and too emotional that I can't support moving it to a second reading. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments from any other counselors tonight on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Star, go ahead.
Yes, I have some questions for Director Franken from the Health Department, or someone from the Health Department that could answer, kind of give us an update of where we're at.
I believe she is on the phone. Jill, are you still on, on with us?
Yes, I am there.
All right, go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director Franken. Can you give us an update of where we're at number-wise and what's going on in our community? As it relates to the...
Sure. Um, yes, I, I can do that. So I, not knowing exactly which numbers you're wanting me to communicate, I can give you an update on what's happened most recently today and just where we're at overall as a whole. And I do encourage folks to go to siouffalls.org/covid19 to be informed on a daily basis about what's going on in our community. So... Um, so today, um, in Mayhaha County, we had 227 cases in Lincoln County, 66 cases. Um, McCook, eight, and Turner, 12. So that just gives you a sense of where we're at in our MSA. The, um, total cases of the state were 1,004 today. And we had, in our MSA, we had five new deaths, four in Minnehaha County and one in Lincoln County. Um, we also have hospitalizations between Avera and Sanford today at around 199. I would share with you that that is, um, you know, changes regularly throughout the day. So I really don't want to, um, um, be able to, oh, you know, I'm gonna just go here to something that Sandy is sharing with me as well. Um, but I do want you to know that, um, uh, the hospital rates have been increasing. Um, they've been going from, I think we were sitting around 150 about a week or two ago, and we're sitting at around 199, um, just for our, um, MSA. Now, not all of those patients are coming from Sioux Falls, uh, per se. I know that the health systems have been trying to do a good job of giving us an estimate of how many, um, hospitalizations are actually coming from the Sioux Falls area. And I know that's been in the range of, um, anywhere from 25 to 30%. I've heard a recent, um, estimate of around 50% from Avera just yesterday. But that again also is a, a varying number. Um, so I hope that helps you. Um, and if you want any other, other information that I haven't already provided, please let me know.
Thank you, Director. I did have one more follow-up question. The, uh, there was an additional announcement today, I believe, from one of the healthcare systems that they're postponing, uh, unnecessary, or not unnecessary, but, uh, the right terminology, that they're going to have to stop some of the, uh, elective procedures because they are so full. Did I catch that right in the, the media announcements?
Well, I, yes, I, yes, that, we were made aware, um, just as you were, that, uh, they are making some adjustments to the types of patients that they're doing. Um, I think it's elective surgeries, that they're rescheduling some elective surgeries. That is all, uh, those are all, um, strategies that are part of their, um, surge planning. And so I would, um, expect that they would probably say that those are all expected interventions that would occur, um, throughout this pandemic as the need to, uh, make sure they have capacity for COVID patients ebbs and flows.
That word "expected" has really been one that's been thrown around quite a bit, um, that I find concerning, that we expect more of our residents to become sick, continue on and, and possibly die, um, no matter who they are. I guess my real question is, when it, when it all boils down, when you listen to these numbers, I don't know how much worse it's gotta get before we act. How do we react to our employees and our healthcare systems? Our teachers, our people that were expected to be, um, on the front lines fighting for us, and we continue to sit here and do nothing? And say, it's gotta run its course. We've gotta get some kind of herd immunity that we've never seen happen without a vaccine. We keep saying there's vaccines on the horizon, though we have to be ready by November 15th for a vaccine that doesn't exist. When do you think, Director, that from a policy standpoint, we've gotta act?
Well, I think that we have been...
I'll burst like that and I'll kick you out of here, okay?
Go ahead, Jill.
Um, thank you. We have been, um, acting on a number of fronts. Um, there are numerous, um, initiatives that we have been, uh, putting into place. We've been partnering with the community as a whole to do, um, you know, a number of, um, mask initiatives, um, communicating with the public. Um, I'm sure everyone is, you know, could recite in their sleep the, you know, mitigation strategies that I communicate, and others are communicating on a daily basis. Um, we also have done things to help mitigate the spread of COVID in our, um, homeless shelters, um, and providing, um, recovery isolation, um, um, opportunities for people to isolate and quarantine if they are, um, not able to do so where they dwell. And, um, and we've been, you know, partnering with our, um, community partners in, in numerous ways to ensure, um, that we have, um, the, the right systems in place to be able to, uh, respond, um, to this pandemic. So, um, you know, that's, those are things that I think I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about.
I, I totally agree, and I thank you for the work that your, uh, department has done. I, that's it for the questions for, for you, Director. I appreciate that. Um, one of the things that stands out to me is that we heard our healthcare professionals say this week that you can't look at our numbers and say that they're not exponentially going up. We're out of control, that we continue to see the positivity rate continue to skyrocket. And as we see additional cases, we're going to see additional hospitalizations. It's just the numbers. We've spent a lot of time tonight talking about numbers, but our healthcare workers aren't going to see any relief if we don't take better mitigation efforts. What we've done have been, has been effective, but it's not enough. It's going to continue to go up. And the thing that we talked about back in April and May is that we were gonna guarantee people a hospital bed. We're getting to the point where we can't do that, and the numbers are bearing that out. It's time to act. It's time to do it. I'm not sure that I'm sold on the mask mandate is enough to mitigate the efforts, but this is a start, and we're ready. And again, back in April and May, we said if the numbers got like this, we were gonna act. And we're not acting. We're not doing enough. This mask mandate, I'll totally agree with everybody in the room, isn't gonna get us the results that we need to mitigate the virus and to be able to allow our business community to have a, uh, a Christmas season. We're going to continue to spread, and we're gonna continue to see exponentially more deaths, more hospitalizations, more affecting our community. We're seeing it already. Businesses are shutting down because they don't have the employees to stay open. And someone said it in one of the emails that I got. You can pay me now, or you can pay me later. And later always costs more than acting now. Thank you.
Counselor Erickson.
Thank you so much. Um, just wanna add, um, a couple, two cents in, and, and I'm calling in from home, uh, and actually was at the doctor's office yesterday. And, and one of the things I found really interesting is, as we talk about the mask mandate and the, the COVID numbers increasing, overhearing the nurses and the doctors discussing that on social media, they saw several of their patients that were either supposed to be in isolation or in quarantine out and about. So we have a responsibility as a society. We have a responsibility that, sure, you may feel fine, but the rules are to isolate. The rules are to quarantine and to stay home. And going out golfing and going out and doing those things does not help. For me, that's why I think I see this huge spike. People are tired. The, the mask gives a false sense of security. Uh, it, it does not provide, um, really truly that level of, of safety that, that folks think that it does. Um, I did reach out to some friends up in Brookings, uh, as we all saw what happened in their county, uh, their city not too long ago. And truly, the, the divide in that community and the near fights in the grocery store because of mask shaming, it has emboldened others to think that they're the police to say, you don't have a mask on, and there's, there's some very big bitterness beyond that. Not even knowing if somebody already had COVID, has a medical condition, or why they're not maybe wearing that mask. Uh, and so seeing that divide up there and what it's done to their community to really rip it apart has been really troubling to me as well. Um, for me personally, uh, you know, as a courtesy, I, I did talk to the sponsors. I was grateful they did, uh, answer quite a few questions that I had. Uh, I still have a few lingering questions out there. Uh, as a courtesy, I did say I would send it to the second reading. One of the things I really struggle with, um, is, is that message it sends the community then because they do not support a mask mandate. Um, I think it's important to know also that why the trigger of the ending of the emergency declaration? We did not impose a mask mandate when the emergency was called. And so why is that the trigger for that? How do we know if we're winning the battle on COVID? How do we know that? What are those trigger marks for us as a community to say, hey, you know, we have this, this new virus. We're looking for, uh, immunization to come through to make sure that we, um, protect everyone. Until that happens, you know, if we can keep the numbers at this amount, that's winning. What, what is that threshold? And I think that's been kind of a frustrating part, that it's really been driven by the media as far as what that narrative should be. And we as leaders should really come together and say, hey, we're comfortable with this. We, of course, don't want to see anybody die. We don't want to see anybody sick. We know it's, it's a real health emergency, but we also understand that we have to make those choices for ourselves. And so, um, just as I'm talking through all of this, I just want to be very clear. Just because someone votes to pass it through for the first, onto the second reading does not necessarily mean that they will be supporting it at second reading. Um, I just want to make that very clear. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Jensen, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, like my colleague that just, uh, spoke, uh, you know, have some really big questions on, uh, this mask mandate. And they go along these lines and, uh, hope that these will be answered over time as we continue to work through this. Uh, I, like my colleague, have talked to, um, both sponsors and have suggested that we move it on. I think this is an important conversation to have as we go into the winter months. I understand that the efficacy of masks, uh, and specific masks are different. All, all masks are not created equal. I understand that. And the thing that we have to do is we have to come together. South Dakotans have to come together on this deal. Some people will not wear masks, some people will wear masks. But if we can try and promote a mask campaign that came out last week, the mayor was there, the Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce was there, 40 organizations, the medical associations were there. Everyone was there, working together, trying to say, mask up, South Dakota. And I understand that it isn't going to do everything that they intended to do or that this mandate would intend it to do. But some of the questions that I have specifically on this, and I've addressed them, uh, before the meeting with, uh, Counselor Sale, and we're gonna work on these, is what metrics exactly, what numbers are we tracking to know that we need the mask mandate today? The, the second question that I, you know, had is, if we are using a specific metric and it doesn't work, what's next? I don't intend to ever vote to shut down businesses in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I think it'd be bad for our community. We want to keep it open. But we have to work to do, together to make that happen. So what's next if this mask mandate doesn't work? Are we gonna use face shields? Are we gonna use, uh, tactics that, that are used in other communities that shut down businesses forever? I'm not for that and can never be for that. Um, some people alluded tonight that, uh, our hospitals are full, breaking at the, uh, at the brim, that we can't take anymore. My question to that individual is, what exact facts does, uh, are out there that show our ICU beds are at full 100% capacity? And specifically, have the healthcare systems asked for this mask mandate? As of last week during the, um, mask up, uh, South Dakota campaign, I don't think they're asking for a mandate. So, you know, we'd like to hear from them as well and see what they have going on in, in, in their, in their hospitals. Because I think it's important to have all of the facts, not just be able to sit up here and, and spout off about what we think. Um, I think we need to have those facts. Um, you know, what is the capacity at our healthcare systems to manage this? I sympathize with our frontline workers, our nurses, our doctors, the people that are supporting them in every one of their roles, because they are, this is their Super Bowl. As a mentor of mine said earlier this week, this is their Super Bowl. They're, they're trying to save people's lives, and it, it means something to them that we're up here talking about this, and we're gonna do it for another week. Uh, I think there's enough votes to pass it through tonight. Uh, what I, what I don't know is if there's gonna be enough votes to pass a mandate through next week. Uh, some of the other things that some of my other colleagues have, have talked about, um, is, how is this going to be enforced? I understand that our police force are, are second to none when it comes to, uh, monitoring and, uh, enforcing our laws here. But, uh, like, like Counselor Sale said earlier today, if we're going 33 on Minnesota Avenue and the speed limit's 30, will they avoid it? We don't know. And then we don't know the ramifications of those people that are being, uh, um, you know, this law is being enforced on. So I'd really think about these things before we, uh, finally pass this through. Um, the CDC suggests that we wash our hands, wear masks, and social distance, uh, by more than six feet. Why aren't we mandating ma, uh, washing our hands as well and doing other things to prevent the spread of COVID? Why are we only doing the mask? Where, where did it become about the mask, uh, and, and mandating it? And the mandate specifically, uh, that we have to debate here tonight? I would encourage all of Sioux Falls citizens, if you can, mask up. Do it for your fellow person, even if it might impact their life just for that 30 seconds you see them. Why not do it? Why not mask up? Why not help our healthcare providers as we go forward? This might be the Carobiner mask that one of our individuals stated tonight. Uh, but if it has one chance to, to help, let's do it. Finally, I think as we move forward, we have to come together. Some of the emails that we got were very vocal, and they were rude, outright rude, uh, on both sides. And no one had an idea of where I stood, uh, uh, tonight, uh, for this. So what I'd encourage you to do is reach out with kindness. Reach out with South Dakota common sense. Reach out with, uh, a mutual admiration for trying to, uh, come forward and make something happen that's good and, and be okay with the difference of opinion. So with that, uh, at this time, with my questions, I can't support it, uh, on the 10th, but I want to work through these questions and see what we have, uh, uh, next week on the 10th. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion on this item, counsel? All right, we got a motion, a second on the floor to, uh, take it to a second reading next week. Let's vote on that.
Counsel members Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nythert?
No.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
All right, that item passes, seven to one. We'll move on to item 40.
Item 40, first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 30, City Council, Section 30.001, council meetings. Recommendation, set a date a second reading for Tuesday, November 10th, 2020. Sponsors are council members Jensen and Erickson.
Counselor Jensen.
Mayor, thank you very much. This is, uh, a very simple, uh, change to the ordinance. We're striking seven and putting six, uh, for, uh, when we're gonna start meeting. Tonight, we start at seven. This would change the official council meetings to start at 6:00 PM. Uh, what brings this is, over the last, uh, couple of months, we've worked together as a council to kind of redefine how our, uh, city standing committees, uh, function. They used to meet after the informational meeting, and now they're kind of going at an ad hoc, uh, type meeting. So what this does is a couple of things. It moves a meeting to six o'clock, and we believe that when we haven't engaged public like we've had tonight, there's great conversations that come out of it, and I love seeing that at the city council meetings. So it's my hope, by moving, uh, to this time, that we're able to involve more of our, uh, individuals throughout the community. The second thing is, I believe that, uh, a lot of the individuals that are in the city of Sioux Falls, uh, figure out what's going on here by our, our media. As you see here tonight, there's a lot of media because this is a hot-button, uh, uh, topic tonight in the mask mandate. Uh, what I think though is that this will give them more opportunity to get back to their, uh, uh, stations and present what is happening in your city. Uh, the second... The second thing that I'd like to talk about is transit. What this does for people, it allows people to get here and it allows them to get home. Many of our meetings go past, well, we're almost to 9:00 now, but go past 9:00. And that doesn't allow for our public transit and our paratransit to get those people back home or within a reasonable place that they can get back home. So I think that that will allow all members of our community access to this place, which is their place, which is their city council. I also believe that this will improve efficiencies with our staff, our council staff and our city staff. Many of them are hourly employees and they wait here until 7:00 and have a big break in between, you know, the 4:00 informational and the 7:00 meeting. So this is strictly procedural. It works on improving efficiencies and effectiveness and it works on what we've already accomplished with our committee meetings. So with that, I would leave it open.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Anyone from the public would like to speak to this item tonight?
Bruce Danielson. This thing's a lie. This isn't being done to help the disabled. This isn't being done to make it citizen-friendly. This is strictly being done because $117,000 defeated an advocate for open meetings, for the public's access, the public being able to sit down after they've had dinner and either be here in this room or watch it on television. This is $117,000 in action. This item and the one coming up are strictly being done to make it so we, the people, cannot be part of this meeting in any way, shape, or form. Shame on you, people. Shame on you. This is not for the people at home. This is not for the citizens of Sioux Falls. This is being done strictly for this group right up here in front of us so they can go home, they can go to their parties, they can go do their drinking, they can do whatever, and then allow their business people that have been allowed to be here right after work to be able to help them out. We're going to be getting rid of the informational next. I can guarantee that. You don't want us to be part of this meeting. You don't want us to ever have anything to do with what's going on in this room. The very fact that that's an open meetings violation, you don't care. That's jail time. And I think that we need to do something about it. The people of this town need to have something that they can count on when they come here and they come here as these people have. And you're taking away their right to be here by some of the games you're playing. This is $117,000 in action. This is unlimited political collecting of money. When we changed all of those laws, all the ordinances on campaign finance that was supposed to be reformed, that's $117,000. That's $250,000 for mayor oral race. That's unlimited money running this room. This item and the next one coming up are a shame. And you people should be ashamed of yourself for even considering this. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this tonight? Come on up. Take your time.
I'm going to.
All right.
Thank you. Tim Stanga, if anybody can believe that everybody watches the news in Sioux Falls, I think you better think twice on that one because a lot of people don't listen to Calo, they don't listen to KSI, why? They don't listen to KDLT, because why? They lie, they don't tell the truth. Is this done for you guys or the public? For one, you're not going to bring any more people in from the public because why? Because you shame them when they come in here. I wish that we could take these cameras when the public is up here, we could put the cameras down on you guys. And we can watch you guys play tiddlywinks underneath the table and smile and laugh and swat each other. I've sat and watched it so many times, it isn't even funny. I've watched the mayor play hangman on his phone. I think I'm the guy that he's hanging, but you never know. It's pretty pathetic on how things are done. This is done, not to, we want sheep. I tell people at the wellness center that I go to, I said, all this city wants is sheep. And they ask me why? Because they don't want anybody down here talking bad about what's going on in the city. They don't want anybody to know what's going on in this city because why? Because we want to sweep everything under the rug. We don't want people to know about what's going on with the swimming pool or the new city building or the event center. Because why? We don't want to tell people that. It's pretty sad. It's a sad day in this town. And I will be talking on the next one, too. I'll take my time.
All right, anyone else to speak tonight?
Stephen Ciano, I'm not sure of the topic, but, and if I'm out of line, let me know.
It's about moving our meeting time one hour.
I have expressed in the past that I've had difficulty getting the bus back home. And moving it down an hour would be helpful to me. And if this inconveniences other people, well, it helps me. Fortunately, today I've gone past the time to get the bus back, but I have an electric bicycle. So that should get me back to 26th and Sycamore. Just give me an hour after I get out of here. So I'm okay with that. I have made arrangements. But it has been difficult for me with my disability and especially when the number nine bus was cut out for a while, which made it even more difficult for me to get anything accomplished. So, and also, as been mentioned about you people closing off stuff, I bring up again about letters, emails that have been written that should be made public. Anyone who receives a letter from the public, it should go public on the web. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else to speak on this one tonight? All right. Let's get a motion on the floor on this, please.
I'll make a motion to set a date of second reading for November 10, 2020.
Second, Erickson.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Erickson on this. Discussion counselors?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Starr, go ahead.
Sure. If I could ask Counselor Jensen a question as the sponsor?
Go ahead, yeah.
Thank you. Counselor, I get what we're trying to do because I do really see the need to be able to get to things in a more timely manner for our folks. What I'm concerned about is that this is going to potentially have to move up our informational time from 4:00 to maybe 3:00 or 2:30. And I see the long-term issue with it being that it makes it more and more difficult for the average person to serve as part of this board. It's hard enough to, when you're working, to get off work at 3:30, to be here by 4:00 or whatever that time is, depending on how you work. Did you take that into consideration that there's going to be an earlier time for the informational's as we continue to be briefed and to be able to handle that?
No, the informational will stay at 4:00. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, and if that's the case, that takes us out of time. It's going to continue to cut back on the amount of briefing that we get. It's been months till today that we've heard from the health director as a council to be able to be updated and briefed. We're seeing fewer and fewer things put on the informational agenda, but there's going to come a time where we run out of time, which by moving it back that hour, really, if the meeting starts at 6:00, we need at least 20 to 25 minutes for Tony downstairs to be able to reset and move. And now we're down to less than, you know, an hour and a half or so to continue to be briefed. We're not going to get the information we need. We've already started pulling things from the informational agenda because we don't have time. There's been a number of times in the course of the last year that I've been asked to remove things from the informational agenda because we're out of time. We need to have an executive session. We need to have different topics of the day and we don't have enough time. And this concerns me because I think in the long run, we're going to be looking at moving the informational up. We're just going to have to move it up because there are going to be times where we need that amount of briefing or worse yet, we're not going to get the briefing. And we're already starting to see that happen with the agenda review meeting being eliminated, the number of topics and things that were being updated on at the informational meeting. And this is just going to turn out bad. And maybe sometimes we have to go ahead with it and see how it works, but I'm really concerned that we're getting fewer and fewer briefings because of time. And this is going to shorten the amount of time that we have to be briefed and be updated on what the city is accomplishing.
Any other comments, counsel? Counselor Sale, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor?
I'll go to Counselor Sale first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Counselor Starr's point about moving the 4:00 informational, I will vehemently oppose any move to move that forward for the same reasons that you said. We would disqualify way too many of our citizens if we move that up. If this does pass and it goes to 6:00 and it starts to be a continuous problem, I'll be the first one to try and move their meetings back to 7:00. I think the informational meetings that we get as a council are very vital to the way we make our decisions. Sometimes I know we hear things four times before the final vote goes on through that. And hopefully, I know with the council chair Greg Knightzert's leadership, we probably won't have those issues going forward. I'm not quite sure where we're going to be on this come next Tuesday, but I'm going to vote to move it forward. But Counselor Starr, your points are well taken and I echo the...
Any other comments, counsel? A counselor on the phone. I think those, was that Counselor Selberg or Kylie?
It was. It was, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. It is a valid point being made. As far as time, it could be a bit of a crunch and it could be an experiment where if we did something like this and after a bit it didn't work, well, we can always revamp it. I, for one, don't think that it would be way out of bounds to talk about moving the informational to 3:30. I mean, I don't think that's going to throw out people from running for this office and I think maybe a half hour would do just fine. I don't know how often that we go past 6:00, but it's not that often. If we add a 30-minute buffer there, that might be a solution to that problem, too. So I am open to this. I think it does make it easier for people to maybe get there a little bit or come right after work. I don't buy into this conspiratorial theories. I can't keep up with them all the time. On one hand, where there's a conspiracy because we want to move something to the end of the meeting later, but yet now we want to do something earlier for people, now that's, there's some kind of conspiracy behind that. I don't buy any of that. I think this is meant for people to have better opportunity. It still is after work for most people. They can come to the meetings. I think it would be worth a try and I do think that there might have to be some tweaking and maybe after a while it might have to go to 7:00 if it doesn't. But anyway, it's got my support to look into it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion, counsel, on this one? All right, let's take a vote on this then, please.
Councilmembers Erickson? Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item 41, first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 30, City Council, Subchapter, Organization and Procedure, Section 30.013, Order of Business, and Section 30.015, addressing the city council time limit. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 10, 2020. Sponsors, the mayor.
All right, I'm going to pass the gavel and speak to this item so Council Chair Knightzert has the gavel. This before you, counsel, is purely a procedural change that I'd like to see made. You know, the purpose of our council meetings is to first and foremost, conduct the business of the city. That's on our agendas. The business of the city includes the public. So following each agenda item, the public is given an opportunity to provide input on the item at hand. In fact, about two years ago, we changed that to first readings, to include first readings. And statistically, I can maybe show this even at second reading if you'd like, our meetings are lasting longer on average because we're providing more opportunity for input than this council has ever had because of that change. I am proposing that the general public input, however, or said another way, input that is not related to any items on this agenda, be heard following new business. So this change in the order of our meetings provides members of our public, who are here to conduct business with this body, an opportunity to have their item reviewed first, which time they can choose to leave or stay for the remainder of the meeting. All public attendees that are providing input on these items will be able to continue to do so as each item is considered by this body. Lastly, I have and continue to be probably one of the most accessible mayors that the city has ever had. I have open office hours, I have a dedicated constituent email line, I have multiple ways that you can reach both me and the city counselors for the public. And so the proposal in front of you outlines just two sections of the ordinance to make this simple procedural change in the order of our agenda. It's 30.013 and 30.015. 30.013 is Order of Business, moving public input from immediately following approval of regular agenda to following new business. And 30.015 specifies that just the general public input portion of the meeting shall not include input on topics heard earlier in the meeting on the regular agenda. So that's it and I will stand by for questions after input.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item?
Bruce Danielson. You know, here we go again, open meeting violation three because nothing is sitting over here. Have any of you read Loesman v. City of Riviera Beach, 2018? It was a Supreme Court decision from two years ago that they decided to play games with public input. And they tried to institute something similar to what appears the mayor just said in here, that if we talked about anything during the public input period at the end of the meeting, that we'd be in violation and the security could escort us out of the place and have us arrested. Fein Loesman won the case. He brought it pro se against the city of Riviera Beach, Florida, and established the right of citizens to stand before a body like this and speak of any topic they wish during the public input period if it was germane to the city. By saying in your paperwork that we've not seen here in the room, that we would be told that we can't speak to an issue that happened during the meeting is unconstitutional. And this is wrong, this is boneheaded, this is spineless, this is a disgusting behavior for this room to even be considering moving things around. We just had a guy up here just now saying that he has disabilities. Now you're going to make him sit here until, oh, I don't know, 9:00 so that he can talk about what he wants to talk about that has something to do with the city? We've had a lot of elderly people that have come here. I've brought different people here through the years so that they could be part of public input. The only way they could do that is because it was at the beginning of the meeting. The people that are coming here to do business have paid you people campaign contributions so that they could be at the front of the line. That's what $117,000 is doing. We are moving things to the front of the line. And this is not the way our government is supposed to work. This is, the people of Sioux Falls own this building, they own this government. And it's about time that people are getting upset enough because of some of the foolishness that's going on in this room, that maybe we should make some changes here in the near future on the form of government and send most of you packing onto the street. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this? Come forward. Good evening.
Stephen Ciano. I repeat what I've said before about letters have been sent by myself and others. There should be a bulletin board and every word uttered in these meetings from the beginning to the end should also be posted for the public. in these meetings from the beginning to the end should also be posted for the public to view. So, ever, this is transparency. Um, our mayor ran, uh, for office, I recall, citing his, uh, desire to promote transparency. That's a good way to start. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Stanga. That trip to China really taught you a lot, didn't it? Socialism. Because that's what we have today. Socialism. I didn't know we lived in Russia. But I remember, I remember when you came back from that trip, you came in and said that China would be one of the best people to do business with because they could do good for us. But what they do, they gave us a virus, COVID nineteen. This, what is being done tonight, is just coming back on the people that come in every week. We express our emotions. We, we express what's going on in this city. It has nothing to do with public input. But see, again, people that are watching this for Sioux Falls on the, on TV are gonna realize that maybe we don't have to watch the city council meetings anymore because the only reason we watch the city council meetings is we watch the, the input. And then we shut the TV off because they know what's gonna happen on the city council. You got your rubber stampers and you might have a couple that stand up with the people. It's about time that you guys start realizing what, what you're supposed to be here for. I know one person just smiles at me all the time. Shifty shift. But you know, it's pretty sad. It's pretty sad, shifty shift. Because when you sit there and smile, that's where we need the cameras down on you guys. So, the public can see how you treat us when we come up here. I have no respect for a lot of you people. But I can say one thing, when I have sat down with some of the city workers and I have gone through my neighborhood, they have a different opinion about me. When I sit down with them and go over different things that have to be done in my neighborhood because of one reason, they respect who I am. It's hard to get respect when you're not given respect. This right here is the mayor. It's all it is. He doesn't want people to come up. He, and the way I understood was, uh, when the scouts come up. They shouldn't have to listen to the, to input when the people come up here. I'll tell you what, some of these scouts, they probably went through divorces where these kids have been treated like crap and they still are. They might be in, in a, in a spot where mom and dad are, can't get along, and they're going through it every day. But yet these people out here, when those scouts come in, they realize that they have a right. They have a right for, to be able to give your input, a freedom of speech, instead of being put to the end of the meeting. Alls you want is sheep.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none. Any questions? Oop, one more. Welcome.
Once again, Richard Lemos. Um, I don't think this meeting should have happened at all. It's election night. We could have been home with our families, watching the results. Um, the reason I found out because of my wife telling me that this is gonna be a mandate. And once again, everyone making contact with this podium, this is a contact service. You have COVID right here. No one was asked to please sanitize your hands afterwards. Wash. So, what brought me here tonight was this. And the fact that I had a loving wife who cares for my family and the new place that we will move to informed me, and that's why I'm here tonight, on her behalf, because she had to be at home with my two-year-old son. Um, this should have, this should have waited to the, the tenth. If you want to move up the, the meeting, you have Uber and Lyft. Lot of people know how to use our phones. We could go out and make adjustments to our, to, to make it. Um, I don't know, I'm gonna be watching everything going closely. I, I left California to make sure that I'm not living in a liberal state where it's suppressing, uh, my freedoms and making sure that I have a best opportunity to have for my family to come out here. So, coming forward, every election, I will be watching what you guys pass forward. I'll be putting my voice to every person I can to. One of the speakers tonight is a coworker man. Because of our conversation, led to one more person getting over here and speaking against this situation, the mask. So, public opinion, it's, it's gonna be heavy going forward. I'll make my voice heard all around me. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Others? Seeing none. Now we'll look for any questions or any motions. Counselor Selberg, I think you had a comment on the phone?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, well, I know we spent, uh, geez, I don't know, weeks, even months, fine-tuning this subject, uh, a couple of years ago. And I do think some, some improvements were made. I mean, in the end, we did give citizens more opportunities to have their voices heard. Um, that being said, of course, there's always room for improvement. And I guess my view on this is if the change is being discussed, our, they'll in no way limit the opportunity for citizens to speak at our meetings or, or limit the amount of time they already have to speak. Then I'm willing to at least give it some consideration and pass it along to the, to the second meeting. So, um, just wanted to pass that along as being, I know a bunch of us worked pretty hard on this a couple of years ago too. So, just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Counselor Brecky?
I would parrot what Councilmember Selberg said and then add to it. To, to state that this was, is purely procedural, I think is an understatement. Um, we dealt with this issue three weeks into year term, mayor, and it was very contentious. And this, this public input at the beginning of the meeting has evolved into something that is extraordinarily meaningful to a large number of citizens in this community. And the fact that it's at the beginning of the meeting is very important to that segment. It has evolved into a very valuable, uh, problem-solving tool for a lot of citizens. We limited it to thirty minutes. We limited it to three minute, three minutes per person, and it's been extremely manageable. And I, it, it feels more like this has to do with the content, you know, of, of some of the regulars that come and that First Amendment right that allows them broad latitude and what they say that is pushing this to the back of the meeting rather than recognizing, um, how it has evolved to such a, a meaningful thing to so many people as they've brought problems to us, which we've taken on and solved and, and, and mediated and facilitated because of the very input that's happened, you know, at the beginning of the meeting. Pushing this to the back, um, will limit the number of people who will come and take advantage of it, no doubt. And I don't know that anything was broken. It also troubles me that both this one and forty and forty-one, you know, just a week later from a couple other or ordinances that were brought by two of my fellow council members, worked their way through, uh, informational meetings, worked their way through the operations committee on the council, and these two didn't do either of that. And these are, any time that we dabble in our process, our meeting process, I think we need to go through a full process that we have in place. And it's troubling to me that, for example, this one in particular, mayor, was not brought through the operations committee. Because, mayor, your role in this meeting procedure is limited. You, you are the chair and the presiding officer, and you're here for tie-breaking vote and veto power, but that's it. This is the council's business meeting, and this is the public's public meeting. This is the public meeting where the council watches the public portion of government. And at the very beginning, it has been our tradition for years to allow public input. And two years ago, we restricted it to thirty minutes and three minutes per person, and it's been extremely manageable. And all of a sudden, just drop this out of the blue without running it through the operations committee. So, the very council members who are responsible in this meeting for engaging and listening to and being, um, being heard and, and the public allowing to be, be presenting to us, um, without even, you know, the courtesy of bringing it through our committee process and, in which, again, we're having public meetings now and the people could weigh in on this and start to, you know, offer their input so you could hear from them at an earlier stage, you know, how strongly they feel about this. You know, I hope the same people that came to us two years ago, and there was a number of them, who spoke very passionately and very patriotically about what this has evolved into. To, so to say it's just procedural, it's an affront to me and it's an affront to all those people who, who used it. And I could go on and on with the list. People like the municipal band, um, you know, individuals, three minutes. All they're asking for is three minutes, one half hour before we get to the business, where they've had meetings. They've had meetings with their government all over the place. They're having meetings in private, you know, in the, with the administration before they bring it forward to the public vote. To give our citizens, you know, three minutes apiece for thirty minutes, you know, seems such a small thing, um, for, you know, and I'm, by next week, I will have a list, you know, of the, of the, of the kind of things that were raised and those issues that either individual council members took on or the mayor's office took on or the council and the mayor collectively took on and actually brought results to. And I, and I'm really, I'm concerned that this is going to have a chilling effect on something that's become very meaningful as part of our, our democratic government and as part of, um, who we're serving out there and allowing them a very, um, a very meaningful place in the procedure and, and, and really kicking them to the back of the bus. And I'm, 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 I'm sad that we're gonna go through this when, to my knowledge, nothing was broken. It was working. And it, it did result in a compromise, um, when we dealt with it two years ago. And I, I, I just, I'm not sure why, why we're, we're having to, to do it again. In my opinion, it's not broken. But, uh, in any event, I'll wanna send it forward for us, for a further discussion.
Thank you. Before we continue, we should get a motion on the floor. Could I get a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November tenth, twenty twenty for this item?
So moved. Jensen?
Is there a second?
Second, Erickson.
Moved by Jensen, seconded by Erickson. Further discussion. Counselor Sale?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, I along with Counselor Brecky, uh, will vote to move this to a second reading. I was involved, as, as seven of us were, in the crafting of the compromise two years ago. Uh, I am unaware that that compromise has fallen apart to do, to do that. Yeah, I don't like to sit here and get yelled at either. Whether it's seven o'clock or nine o'clock or ten o'clock, I think that's probably still gonna happen for us. So, I will move it to second reading, but I'm, I will just say that I am yet sold on why we do it. And if you remember back two years ago, I was a supporter at that time of moving it to the end of the meeting. Now, after two and a half years of sitting through it, I realize I can tolerate it. It's not comfortable, but I can tolerate it. So, uh, I'm, just wanted to say I'll move it to the second reading and somebody has the opportunity to convince me that it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Counselor Erickson.
Sorry, technical difficulties with my phone. I apologize here. Um, thank you, uh, so much, uh, for calling on me. I just wanna point out that Charter two point zero three does recognize the mayor as one of our city counselors. And so, to diminish the role of our mayor as none other than an additional city counselor is really a disservice to this body. I think it's important to note that, um, we do not have, uh, an actual policy that says that any ordinance that comes forward has to go through an informational meeting or a committee meeting. Um, oftentimes, that is simply at the mercy of whomever's bringing something forward. It's clearly designated that the mayor can bring forward any ordinance he chooses or an item can be brought forward by two city counselors as well if it's already not on, um, through an application process. So, I think it's important to note that this is certainly the right of the mayor to bring forward. It is a procedural change. This is not changing, uh, the time of public input or anything like that. It's not restricting it. It's simply stating, um, that those that have paid to be on the agenda and have to be there, they do not have a choice. They have to be there. Um, I was monitoring some of the comments on social media, and I think that Chuck Point said it best. He said that why, I, I'm going to read his exact comment on here because I don't wanna misquote him. He said, "But what about the people who have filled out applications, paid fees, and waited patiently for their turn? Why does someone who walks in automatically get priority?" There were a few exchanges back and forth between, uh, him and another person. But I think that his point is solid with, with that. He does not have a choice. Those that bring items forward do not have a choice. They have to be there. Whether someone has to hire an attorney for a rezone or whatever it might be, they're required to be there. This is simply just restructuring the council meeting. I will draw your attention to, back in twenty eleven, Counselors Zirkunbakan, um, Sue Ogular did move the meeting date from Monday to Tuesday. Now, that item was extremely controversial and everybody was up in arms and the sky was falling. Now, today, no one even pays attention that that date changed from a Monday to a Tuesday. No one even realizes. The other question I would ask each and every one of you to look at, every other city committee that meets, when is their public input? When? Find one that is in the beginning of the meeting. The county commission is even at the end. All other city, uh, meetings that take place, the public input is always at the end. Even our informational meeting has public input at the end. This simply is a procedural change that restructures the meeting, that just streamlines it with all the other, um, all the other committee meetings. Again, uh, I just do wanna make sure that everyone is aware. If there's any question about the mayor's role, he is a member of the council, and I, I challenge you to look at Charter two point zero three to show that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess we always thi, I think Counselor Sale really did a nice job of pointing out that when you get first elected to this body, you, you think you know what's going on and you've seen a lot of things. And of course, I say nice things about you, Counselor Sale. It's, it, it's a fault of mine and I, I get it taken care of. But, um, I think we're at that point where, i- it was said exactly right. The people who've paid to be on the agenda should be heard first. And that's really what this ordinance change is doing. If we're really concerned about those folks, we should move the pledge of allegiance and the prayer and the ceremonial things to the end of the agenda too. So, that doesn't get in the way of people who've paid to be on the agenda. What we do is we forget whose meeting this is. I can check the charter of who's, um, got what role and whatever, but ultimately, it's the people in the audience, not the people on the dais, that need to be respected as part of this. The reality is, when you go back to two thousand two, the council then found that people deserve their, the citizens deserve the respect of being heard first. The people who come for public input have had some reason to not get their concern handled by the city itself. There's a nugget. Every week, is there some things that are uncomfortable? Yeah. And there are some people that are here every week. And the reason they're here every week is because they care about the city, that they wanna make things better. Do they do it in the most appropriate ways? Probably not. But I too can live through that. I'll never forget the night that the family member came from the building collapse. It's five minutes that I go back to regularly and hear how their family was affected by having a building collapse on their family member and the time they spent in the rubble. I remember the night there was an eighty-three-year-old lady that came up here who was attacked by a rottweiler. And we couldn't get her the satisfaction she needed. Our animal control department didn't do it. We took that information. At eighty-three, she's not gonna come here and sit for three hours. And I think her time and her effort and her part of being our city as a citizen, she's paid to be on our agenda. She's paid to be at the front of the agenda. And we're uncomfortable with the First Amendment. It's one of those things in this country that, that, that's always there. But again, back in two thousand two, the members of the council then took public input from the end of the agenda and said, "We need to respect these individuals that come here for public input and who wanna be heard." I disagree with some of the people who did public input tonight, and I agree with some people. But I've gotten a lot out of it. This is intended to show disrespect to the citizens of our city by punishing them and making them sit till the end of the agenda. And that's really what this comes down to. And that's really what this comes down to. It's also comes down to, we had a deal that's been working, and we went through a lot of work to hammer that out, and now we're rescinding that deal, and that's the bottom line. The other thing that I will be doing, if this does move forward, is that I do plan to bring an amendment that will remove the thirty-minute timeline then. Because if we are gonna move it to the end of the agenda, we should have, um, unlimited public input. We shouldn't limit it to thirty minutes and ten people, um, with their three minutes. So i- if we do, I'll have an amendment ready to, uh, strike the thirty-minute, uh, requirement, because we should be here to stay until the public's done talking to us and giving them that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Counselor Breckie?
I'm gonna respond to the comments made about the charter. I'm well aware of what the charter says with regard to the mail, mayor's role, but you need to look at the section that deals with the mayor's powers. The mayor is the chief administrator for the city. He has a limited function on the council. He doesn't have full voting rights. He doesn't have full discussion rights. He had to pass the gavel in order to do that. This is the city council's meeting. This is the policy-setting bodies meeting. He, I'm not diminishing the role of the mayor. It's a huge role. It's a strong mayor of former government. Um, but this is our meeting with the people where we do the public's business. So all I'm saying is I think it's really important that we give the public priority. And I realize that there wasn't anything technically in violation, but I, I do, I am offended that it's not, that it's being done in a, a, a random fashion and not run through our operations committee. When we are dealing with our operations, there's also opportunities for public input at those meetings, and there's also ta, uh, opportunities for an engaged and longer discussion on it. And this is in, very important. It proved very important the first time, and it's gonna be important this time, and I don't think that it should have been done this way. I think it should have went through that process. So I'll stand by what I said, and I, and I, and I hope that you understand, uh, what the charter is and what the mayor's role. I hope I've helped you understand that, Councilmember Erickson.
Any other further discussion before we call for roll call? Vote? Seeing none, roll call vote on the second reading for November tenth, twenty twenty.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item forty-two, a resolution including certain contiguous territory within the corporate limits of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Annexation one three zero six two dash twenty twenty, tract A, Alaric Farms, second addition. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening. Uh, the applicant here and the owner is Brady Hyde with Empire Homes. Uh, it's located south of West Forty-first Street and west of South Ellis Road. It's about forty-five acres in size. Uh, the purpose of this annexation is they're looking at constructing some future residential development on the forty-five acres.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone, uh, from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, you got any questions for Jason on this one? Look for a motion to approve.
Move approval, Jensen?
Second.
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Kylie to approve this item. Uh, any discussion amongst council here? Let's take a vote on this, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale? Starr? Breckie?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Item forty-three?
Item forty-three, a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Ellis Crossing Edition one two eight one two dash twenty twenty. The planning commission recommends approval four to zero. Private applicant, JSA Consulting Engineers.
Uh, the owner of this property is Lloyd Company. It's located at the northwest corner of Forty-first Street and South Ellis Road. It's about twenty-one point seven acres in size. Uh, the purpose of this preliminary plan is they're looking at con, doing some commercial office and multifamily residential uses on the twenty-one acres.
All right. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item tonight? Counselors, you got any questions on it?
Could, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Could, could you just back up and show the three hundred foot? There's a three hundred, yeah, the three hundred foot radius? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, look for motion.
Move approval, Jensen?
Second.
Second.
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Nitzer to approve this item. Any discussion on the council here? All right, let's vote on it, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item forty-four, a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Ackerman Edition one two nine five three dash twenty twenty. The planning commission recommends approval four to zero. Private applicant, Design and Develop Engineering LLC.
Uh, the owner of this is Clint Ackerman. Uh, this is a preliminary subdivision plan that goes along with rezoning we heard earlier in the night. Uh, it's located, uh, south of East Fifty-seventh Street and east of South Six Mile Road. Uh, the applicant is looking at about three and a half acres, uh, to construct one single-family house and then a future, uh, single-family residential development.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item here? Counselor, do you have any questions for Jason on this, uh, subdivision? All right, uh, look for a motion, please.
So moved, Jensen.
Second.
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by, was that Counselor Kylie?
Yes.
Counselor Kylie with the second there. Uh, any discussion, counselors? All right, let's vote on it, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item forty-five, a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Tallgrass Edition one two nine six six dash twenty twenty. Planning commission recommends approval four to zero. Private applicant, Advance Engineering and Environmental Services Incorporated, Kevin Smith.
Uh, the owner here is RMB Family LLC. This is located at the southeast corner of West Eighty-Fifth Street and South Tallgrass Avenue. It's about sixty-two acres in size. Uh, the purpose of this preliminary plan is they're looking to construct, uh, development with commercial office and residential uses.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Counselors, any questions here? Look for a motion on it, if there isn't.
Move approval, Jensen?
Second, Sale.
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale to approve item forty-five here. Any discussion on it? Hearing none, let's take a vote, Tom.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item forty-six?
Item forty-six, a resolution advising and giving consent to the appointment of members to certain citizen boards, those being Joan Franken, Paul Cosboth, Jeff Nelson, Nancy Reynosa, Aspen Thorthensen, all to the Accessible Housing Advisory Board, Barbara Hamer, and Shannon Dwyer to the Solid Waste Planning Board.
All right. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Oh, you're gonna speak to it before I, go ahead. I didn't know you were here, Shelley, sorry. Come on up. You can speak to it, then I'll take public input. Hi.
Hello, good evening, um, councilmembers and mayor. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Shelley Unruh, Housing Manager with the city, and it is my pleasure to bring forward to you, um, the slate of board members for the Accessible Housing Advisory Board. This is a group that we have been working on for the past eighteen months, and I'm very excited, um, for the opportunity to present this group to you. There has been a lot of diligence in selecting, um, the group of individuals to serve on this board, um, and look very forward to the appointment, um, of this body, as we have a lot of, um, pressing things that this, um, board will engage in immediately.
Thank you. Thank you, Shelley. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? Counselors, do you have any questions for Shelley on the, uh, Accessible Housing Advisory Board, folks there? All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to chime in and probably reiterate or follow up on Shelley's comments, that we're looking forward to getting going. It's been a long time coming, and I know it's, I've been working on it this summer, and Shelley's been working especially hard getting the board together, so can't wait to, to get moving on it. Thank you, Shelley.
All right, thank you, counselor. Any other, uh, questions or comments for Shelley? And if not, I'd take a motion on this?
Move approval, Jensen?
Okay, got a second?
Second. Nitzer?
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Nitzer to approve this item. Uh, counselors, any discussion on it? All right, hearing none, let's vote on it, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item forty-seven?
Item forty-seven, a resolution approving amendments to the twenty twenty audit plan. Sponsors are councilmembers Kylie and Jensen.
Uh, Counselor Kylie, you gonna speak to this item?
Yeah, I can very briefly. I can give you the conclusion of the audit. Uh, it was determined that adequate controls exist over the employee payroll deduction process that is overseen by the city's Human Resources Department. Appropriate authorization and documentation is being obtained and filed adequately based upon testing. Uh, they did not identify any fraudulent or erroneous deductions or unauthorized transactions. The recommendation, uh, will provide additional assurance to mitigate the risk of potential fraud in regard to ACH transactions. Uh, they'd also like to thank the Human Resources, the Finance, uh, and Information Technology Departments for their assistance in providing this audit.
I think that might be the next item, Counselor Kylie.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry.
I think we're still approving the audit plan.
Uh...